Yeah.
I can't.
Do you open it in the?
Maybe I'll open it.
In this IA thing?
No.
Yeah.
That's why. I'll do that.
Well, yeah, I don't have to open it. I think you have to like save it to.
Okay.
Ready? Yeah. Uh, we're gonna stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Thank you for attending this morning and thank you those online. First item of business is the agenda. I know we have a couple additions, Pat?
Yes, uh, commissioners under, um, with the board's approval, uh, right before we adjourn, we'd like to go into closed session per Minnesota statute section thirteen D L three subdivision one B for labor, uh, negotiations. And with the board's permission, we'd like to do that, uh, just right at the end prior to adjouring.
Should we also add the possible action after coming out of that closed sessions for those?
Well, and, and I was just gonna mention that we, we do have can already under county administrator consider bargaining on a contract. So what we'll do is we will skip that, uh, and then go to the closed session, then come back to that agenda.
So after that, we'll, we'll be probably be moving that item to the end of sessions to consider, consider contract.
And then the only other final thing I had, and this came on a finance committee is, uh, I did plan on giving, um, a report on our revenue loss projects and, uh, two of the items that came out of Finex was the tram and the, and some, uh, accounting attorney internship. So with the board's approval, we can just put that under report, but I wanted to just give a heads up that there would be so, some potential consideration on funding those two.
Was there any, John, do you remember? Was there anything else that we talked? I thought there was one other.
There doesn't.
Is that it?
Anything then after we wanna go up and just tour the probation.
Okay. So maybe add work session tour, tour, um, toward the probation area. Um, and just for anyone's information, probation offices, probation officers have moved over to the Wells Fargo building. They are now, the, there was a couple county employees. They're gonna transition over to state employees. Of course, we'll end up paying for them one way or the other. So, um, but that's a good thing. They have, they have better relation, working relationship with their partners over there. So with those changes, have a more motion to approve?
I'll, I'll move motion.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Minutes. Any corrections, additions, deletions?
We get a couple. Take pictures.
Um. I just, there weren't really corrections, just maybe additions, more information on a couple, um, on number three under agenda minutes, um, agenda confirmation. Closed session for the purpose of just probably state the purpose for attorney client discussion. And then that number on page two on the opioid settlement may, on number four, just say that's the second round of the opioid settlement. And just very minor. Um, and then number five, right under that, um, to consider Oakson for appointment or support his appointment by the. For the, for NACO board or for NACO subcommittee? Anything else, anyone?
Yep, I, uh, on page, uh, two of two, under the, uh, over ninety day claims. If you add those numbers up, that doesn't add up to four nine five zero four two. Um, the first four add up to four nine three zero four two. That makes sense.
Mary, get that? Well, see my correct.
Yeah, then on the next page, uh, the third bullet. The second bullet town, there's a typo on township, corn run township. Uh, and then. The third bullet where it says motion and second to approve resolution, is that out of place?
Which one?
The third bullet, cause all these other ones, all the other ones are licenses renewals. And then all of a sudden boom, it pops in where we approve the full time licensing clerk. Is it out of place or did we do it in that order?
Oh, that's under finance, so it might.
Okay. All right. I just, I, I wasn't sure.
Under finance request.
And then on page, the human services report, what page is that on?
I do see what you say, Dave, cause it is under licenses.
Yeah, it's under.
Motion and second to approve resolution oh three two three one A personnel request is under the licenses heading.
Yeah. That makes sense, doesn't it?
It's, it's proper, but it's just auto.
Yeah, it's probably out of the right place. Then I have one more, under human services, the, uh, human services. The human resources, I'm sorry. What am I doing here?
Policy update?
Yeah, the poli, the policy updates where it says, the s, the second line there where it says employee recognition pleased board was there and happy with turnout. It doesn't just sound right. The.
Who was pleased?
Yeah, who, yeah. The board was pleased and happy. They were, it was good turnout, not the pleased board.
We're just making an assumption you were pleased.
Yeah, yeah.
We were pleased, comma.
I think it was that the employees were pleased.
Yeah. I think that, that's all I have, sorry.
Okay. Anyone else? And a motion to approve the minutes as.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, sir's second.
I'll second.
All those, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, open forum. Nobody? Okay. Um, reports and correspondence. Anyone wish to start?
I can start.
Okay.
So just a reminder, um, on the dancing sky, the, the eight, the sixty plus aging, um, Heather Pender, who is the executive director of that organization, has sent us, sent us our board members an email to respond to the, the state's allocation of the funds. So in April, right, currently right now, you can go on the Minnesota Board of Aging website and you can comment on how they're dividing up the, the monies for, for the, for the six organizations in the state. So what they wanna do is they wanna send thirty percent of the money to everybody that's sixty plus and over. And they, then they also want to decrease the amount sent to rural counties, the rural areas to, from twenty-five percent to fifteen percent. So what Heather Pender and, and that organization is proposing is that we send twenty-five percent to the rural counties and, and decrease the amount sent to, uh, the, just everybody that's sixty plus down to twenty percent. Cause what, what'll happen if we don't do that, if they don't do that is then our dancing sky area and the other rural areas will lose money. Because more money will go to the, to the metro area, cause there's more people that are sixty plus years old there. And that's gonna detriment how much, how they can distribute the funds. And one of the big things they do is they feed people that are sixty plus. And they're, they're gonna have to decrease that if they don't. And that's solved. And you can just go on the Minnesota Board of, Minnesota Board of Aging website and then just make a comment on that and say that. That would be, that would be great, cause I think we need to do that to make sure that the state doesn't, the board doesn't allocate it that way. So I'm done with that one. Okay, so, uh, courthouse meeting. We, uh, you, you heard, we're gonna have some stuff presented to us from the attorney and, and, and so forth. Some of the things, the I T department, they're gonna have an update for, uh, for our new camera system in June. Um, how much are gonna cost and so forth. And then one, one bad thing that's gonna happen, uh, but our PCs is they're going to cost about nine hundred dollars more than originally planned. So they're, uh, Judy is looking at possibly not doing them all this year, maybe adjusting some of them and pushing some back, which is not always good because they get old and they don't work right, but, so that's about, that's one of the things.
It's gonna also look a different vendor, maybe.
Maybe a different vendor too, yeah, yeah. And then, uh, who was it that came in and talked about digitizing our township road?
Uh, county recorder.
Recorder, yeah. Yeah. I know, that's.
Susan Seaverston, sorry.
Okay. So they're gonna, they're looking at digitizing, digitizing our township road orders, uh, because they're right now, they're just in packets and paper and they're all over the place and they're hard to use. So anyway, that's that. Do you have anything else?
Well, with that, that would, um, help mainly the, the surveyors and.
Yeah.
And those developers that have to go back and look at those. They don't have to come inside and handle the paper product, cause those are, I mean, some of them are in the eighteen hundreds and, um.
Yeah.
There are some, but we do have an, we do have an option that we gave, I think Pat and, and Susan have the option of, there was a group that came in and did that for their own use. And we're gonna maybe try to pee back off theirs and see if we can't just, um, get a big jump drive from them and, and with minimal expense.
Yeah.
So we have that on for all companies. If not, we'll have to do that internally or contract.
It would be more cost effective if the other way.
Right.
So, so then I went to the historical society meeting and their executive director Becky Mitchell, um, is very excited because they've been really busy. They opened up on February seventeenth. And they've been open, we, we, when we went, they've been open for about a month, uh, was actually closed in the middle for one week after they had their opening. And they are knocking it out of the park. There's people that are excited going there. They've sold more memberships now at this time of year than they've ever sold. And so they're really excited about it. And again, they're, they're trying to, uh, get the grant, the, the whole place open by June. Um, so then it'll be really good, but they, she's had schools come in, she's a, they, all the, all the facility parts that are available are all booked. They've been booking them. We just talked, we just had a meeting this morning. Um, and the, the chamber commerce said she had booked the, the room upstairs with the, that has the balcony out there. That's not, you know, obviously there's like probably four feet of snow on the balcony right now, so it's not being used. But it's, it's really an exciting option, thing that's gonna happen and they're all excited about doing that. And then, so because they're getting busier, she needs to hire some full, more, more, more help. So she needs a full time person to work at the front desk and, and actually in the museum. And then they also need a full time, wanna hire a custodian that can clean and also help with setup and tear down when they have these events. So, so I believe she's gonna start doing that pretty soon. Um, next one that we, that John and I were at was transit and, uh, their rides are up eight point three seven percent in February from last year. So that's, that's really positive. That's a good thing. Um, and then they are, they're, they, he drafted, yeah, it was, with Brian's help, he drafted a lease that we, we got a review for leasing the highway building. Uh, that should be ready maybe for us to look, to be looked at maybe next board meeting. Uh, so that, things are moving along. They're pretty good. Um, the, the old transit building is, is, uh, the plan is to get, uh, get that to the fair board. Okay? So that's still, that's still the plan. Hopefully that, we, we continue to do that. We're looking at, he's also looking at making two part-time positions, a full-time position. So he's gonna go through the process of seeing how that works and he's gonna bring it to our committee and we'll take a look at it and see if that's a possibility. Cause you can't find anybody that work part-time at the transit. Yeah, go ahead, John.
Just addition to the present transit bust on there, we'd end up right now paying Minot or, you know, it's federal money, about sixty-five thousand back. So we've always known we're not.
Yeah, we have to pay back.
Sixty-five.
It's about sixty-five.
And, and the appraisals that we've had done, so.
Yeah.
And then we also talked about white, inviting White Earth to some of the transit meetings because they do, they, they do do some, the trend moving up, you know, they do, buses do come into Detroit Lakes a little bit. Um, in the end of the colony, actually. They, they have four stops in Detroit Lakes where they destinations, where they don't, they don't move people around. They just bring them there to White Earth, White Earth back. So. It'd be, they thought, he thought, Kevin thought it might be a good idea to talk about that. Um, anything, you got anything else, John, on the transit or?
No.
But then, so then another meeting I went to is the DAC, which is actually closed today. I heard that on the radio. Um, they were, in, in February, they, it's a short month and they had three snow days and they still had a positive net income. So that's, that's really good. Um, they got a new vehicle, the one that we talked, I talked about the last time I was there, they got T-boned and smashed up and destroyed. They found, she found, um, uh, she found a new vehicle, Marlene. And it's working out great. It's got, I think, two areas where they can put wheelchairs in. So it's even better than the one that got smashed up. So I guess in a way it was good that it got smashed up together. And then, uh, they also had COVID run through their facility in March. So they were closed for a whole week and they did deep cleaning and did all this stuff and all the residents stayed out. So March is probably not gonna be as good as February as far as staying in the positive, but we'll see. Uh, Barry and I had a Sunnyside meeting. We, we're gonna talk about the, uh, management agreement here in, in the board meeting, so we'll leave it that. Uh, the one thing that Ashley McNally did say is there is not, there is not a lot of support in the legislature currently right now for long-term healthcare. So she is very, very, uh, been very active, I think, with other people and, and herself in, in trying to get more support in the legislature and by the governor for long-term healthcare. Cause they have, there hasn't been a, I don't think a raise in, in that, and then what, how many years did she say? Was it?
No.
It was a number of years.
Three to five.
Three to five, something like that, yeah.
And like the medic, the Medicaid reimbursement or the?
Not exactly sure.
Yeah, I, I don't know where the, which funding source she was talking about, but just, just the Medicare, I think, has increased, but, um, the governor just doesn't have a lot of, um, it doesn't show the, the need, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't see the need for the sunny, or the nursing home cost increase. I don't, I think there, there's, there seems to be, his goal is maybe not to and, and encourage those facilities, rural facilities.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. I, I don't know how you can word that more politically correct, but.
Yeah.
Um, and the, the good thing about Sunnyside, we had another, um, positive, I mean, we did, the February was last month that we, um, reviewed and, and as the shortest month, we still cash flowed and had a positive.
Yeah.
Um, for the end of the month. So positive EBITDA before, for the fiscal year.
Sounds good, yeah. And then also Richard and I are at the Fair Board meeting and they are looking to find a commercial exhibit person to run, which the commercial exhibits are the exhibits that are in the arena and some of them outside the arena. They need, they need someone to, to be in charge of those and find them and run them and open the building up and stuff like that. So they extended it for another week here. I think it was two weeks. They have a couple applicants, but they want, they wanna see if they can extend it to see what they can get. And then also they're looking at having a cornhole tournament on Wednesday in the Grand Center. Currently they have volleyball on Wednesday and they wanna add the cornhole tournament and they think it, they think it's gonna be a really good idea. And so, and I'm actually pretty good at cornholes. That's all I have.
You wanna add anything on fair?
No. Um, I had environmental with John. Uh, we got a new well out there at the landfill for the fire suppression in that new building.
Are you gonna have to hold water then, or is it?
No.
It's gonna pump enough?
Yeah, we only needed five hundred gallons a minute, but that one, that's a twelve inch well and it's given, it's given a thousand gallons a minute.
Thousand.
So it's in some really nice material there.
Can sell water back some California.
Yeah, well, we could even, well, depending on, cause we, we could, uh, we should have fire suppression in that transfer station. And so, uh, because there is a lot of fires and batteries, those lithium batteries are a bad deal. So we're, we're talking about that.
Look at the option of piping up to it.
Yeah.
Or, or drilling its own well.
Yeah.
But that's.
But either way, it'd be cheaper. It, even if we do have to drill another well, it's better than holding that water. So now we know the water's there and, and we got a big piece of that puzzle figured out there.
Yeah, according to, just for those who don't know, according to fire code, you have to either have to produce that many gallons per hour, or you have to have a standing water tank full of water ready to go. And that not only takes space, it.
Yeah, takes a lot of space and it's a lot more money to have that. You gotta have the well anyway. So luckily we did get, uh, a good well. And then I had N R M with Barry and I met Chuck Church from, uh.
North.
North Country Trail. And that guy is something else. Uh, that's probably the best money we spent, I think. He, uh, these guys just go in there. He's, I, he's eighty some years old. Barry, how old is he?
Yeah, I don't know. He's in the.
But they go down this trail, walking trail and they, they take their chainsaws and they cut all the, all the trees out of the way. This is the longest trail system in, in North America. It starts in North Dakota, ends in New York. I, I've seen signs, North Country Trail, but I didn't know what it was, but actually they have campsites with potable water. It's no motorized, nothing motorized on those trails, but for walking. And so, uh, and they, they had, uh, they put a counter, a DOT counter on there and on just one part of the trail, one section of the trail. In eleven days, they had a hundred and seventy-nine people on that trail. So people are using them and they're camping on them and, and he came and got some money for us, about five grand for some, or I hope he's getting money from us, but.
Yeah, they, they, um, need to show receipts for the purchase. So they're buying a few piece of equipment, but, um, I don't know. There was an article in the paper. Travis, what's Bendy, the Bendy's, um, yeah, Danny, Dan Bendy is one of the, he's a hiker and he's traveled, um, uh, has he done every trail in the, in the states now? He's walked every, and these people that do this, they mail supplies to post offices in those areas to, to, to get what they need for that. And they just, it was an amazing article on DL, uh, paper, a couple of years ago, I think it was, but, um, he's one of the, he's become one of the country's leading hikers and it's, it's, for that group, it's a, it's a big deal, but, uh, we have that in our own backyard. We walked it if, some small portions of it as a board when we went out and done some, um, site visits and stuff, but, um, I don't, I never walked the whole thing.
No, I'm gonna go, when it, when it warms up here, I'm gonna go for a walk with him. He invited me up there, uh, but very interesting and, and, uh, getting a lot of work for the amount of money. I've watched some of the stuff that we pay for around here, whether it's engineering or anything else, but that was, that was money well spent. But, and that's, that's all I got.
Okay. Um, the meetings I had were covered Sunnyside and, and, uh, N R M and courthouse, so.
I, yep, I just had, um, we had a Zoom meeting with human, um, services just to go over the opioid agreement. And then we had our ad hoc committee meeting for, um, feedlots. The consensus out of that committee was they asked that we not make any changes to our zoning ordinances, so.
Along with that, quite a few of my representative today that were at the stakeholders at the meeting and mainly their, I think Pat from Dairy North Lake Park there said they're very regulated and gets inspected by M P C A. And, uh, the cons, consensus like Commissioner Jefferson said was to leave our zoning laws as is for now. And so, that was pretty much the agreement. I think we met for a good two and a half, close to three hours and discussed a lot of issues and.
Um, could we recognize those that were on the committee?
I think the ones that were on there, just stand up.
Pat, Pat, does he's on? Travis? Um, Casey?
Casey's on. Um.
Okay, well, thank you for serving on it. Uh, we'll, uh, see where that recommendation goes. And I know, you know, and I think I said when we, we talked about it numerous times, my biggest, I, I'm not, was never concerned about the application to the, to the farm. Cause farmers, farmers know how valuable that fertilizer is and how, how, um, much better it is than gradual. I mean, I, I think anyone that has it wants more of it, uh, the, the natural manner. So, um, anyone have anything to add to that discussion at this time or? No?
Oh, it's, it's, like I said, a lot, a lot of discussion from, you know, one of them says, don't use corporate farms because we belong to corporation and stuff. So it could get mistrue, uh, construed a little bit and, uh, you know, family farms are probably belong to some type of corporation.
A lot of family farms are incorporated.
Yeah, most, most have some LLC or incorporation of some degree, so.
One other thing I wanted to mention off the ad hoc is the, um, benefits committee. Um, Dave is actually on it. Um, but I think there was understanding that I was on it, but Dave and I had talked and I would be willing to, to serve on it. With whenever we're, are we going to be meeting anytime soon, Pat?
So the, the employee benefits committee, just for the record, we had Nelson, um, Jepson on that. Um, if, if, if it's different, we'll correct it. Um, and to answer the question of when are we meeting? It's, we're gonna meet in April. What we were waiting on is the last two bargaining units to provide a representative. And now that they've done that, it's gonna be part of my report.
Okay.
Uh, that we're gonna be sending out an invite, but I do wanna make sure who the commissioners are. So if that's changed, I'll, I'll.
Well, it, it, on the webs, like on our committee list, on, on the Becker County, you know, under us, it's list Dave.
Yeah, and I was wondering if something that she was on.
Yeah, and that's my, that's what I believe it is as well. So, no, an email will be going out the end of this week and scheduling a time. We, we just finally got the last two bargaining units to submit their.
Okay, so it, it is me though.
That's great.
That's it, yep.
I had, uh, too many meetings this last couple of weeks. Uh, just quickly, Wantigan Park, we've got, uh, R P's going out for a design consultant to look at the different phases of construction down there, starting at just minimal, moving up to the final, which is probably gonna be a ten, twelve year process or more. Uh, I did sit on an AMC legislative conference Zoom update. Transportation right now is proposed about just a little over a billion and only about a hundred and thirty million of that is for trails that are statewide, which is not allowing, you think, just our portion of, or Heartland Trail, eight, nine miles was about a few million. So, uh, the bonding target for that was about two point three million for trail. So billion, I mean. There's broadband grants and they've made a change there for individual. Say you got a company that wants to submit, there's a limit of five million for a project and they're gonna increase it to ten million. So it should enhance a lot more out there and it'd be a very good increase and that'll be in the omnibus bill. And one thing that affects counties is the CPA house version right now is a hundred million, which doesn't seem like a lot, but there's a built-in inflation increase. But it would mean a thirty-four to thirty-eight percent increase for counties at this time. Senate hasn't addressed the Billy out there, come up with their own.
What are we getting currently? Is it, it's?
Uh, a hundred, what is the last year, Pat? Remember CPA, uh?
County programming?
Yeah.
Um, boy, Mary, it's one point. Yeah, it's one point two I was gonna say, yeah.
And it's come up. I mean, we got.
It was.
When Palenti was there, we got dropped to, to nothing.
Yeah. But, you know, if it goes through and we get a close to thirty percent increase on that, that really helps out. So, uh, environmental, at a Perry Lake solid waste, uh, disposal. Uh, environmental, at a Perry Lake solid waste disposal meeting. Again, the big discussion of what we're gonna do with the disposal ash here within the next five, six years. We're looking at a couple of options. Uh, a lot of that can be used in, in road construction. Has to be cleaned up. Uh, we'll be touring a spot down at Hoffman that does that. It's, uh, I know even county engineer Jim also the expressed interest is was say, uh, clean up that dump site then, uh, where it's being dumped now, down by, to imperme- and Mills. It's not that far away for road project using in the base. So we'll be working on that. One thing with environmental too was, uh, working with the architect and probably the general a little bit. They missed a lot of stuff in design, right from light switches. And they want change orders to pay for it. And they have their local engineers sign off on the plans. So be a lot of discussion rather than just bending over and paying the change order. So I know in the jail process, we had a lot of that same issue. And if an architect or their engineers that they, um, subcontractor have on staff miss it, they stood behind it. It's something that's on their end.
Well, even when we build, added on to the courthouse, there was a major miss on structural for that added weight to the, for the, um, that big air conditioning unit or the, the big unit on top. And architects stood behind that and they footed the bill and that was significant. They, they lost money on this project, but they recognized that was an architectural error completely. So it's like, you have to.
Well, another thing, I'll be forced today to approve a contract for crushing all of our old concrete out the site and, uh.
How do you, are you selling that privately or are you gonna use that on county projects or?
Use county projects and I don't know if they've sold some privately in the past.
Or to townships to crush concrete?
Yeah, it's, I'm not, not sure what the end product price would be, but it costs is about twelve thousand forty cents a cubic yard to crush it. So it's, it's not the cheapest.
And you charge to get rid of it. We should give it away then, I suppose. No, I'm kidding.
We don't cha- charge that much to dump it, but, uh, no, it's a good product if somebody has a special project, so. If anybody interested, uh, contact Steve Skogood and environmental. I had a few other smaller ones and we touched on a lot of those, so. For time.
The only other thing legislatively, we are, our incinerator is not, would not be excluded then. So we are, we will continue. We're not, that one's not, um, would not be affected by that clean air law.
It's a little bit of gray area, but from what the.
It depends on what's written.
It can be, should be excluded from that. And new law comes through, if it comes through, so.
Okay. Any other reports? Correspondence? Nothing?
Just one, one other, the Public Works Building. I made it this week after about a month of other meetings, but yeah, it's moving right along out there. They're even putting the wood casing and trim around the windows and the offices and it's, it really looked good. They're doing a lot of finished painting in the shop area, the mechanics area.
Where?
Doing epoxy on the, uh, I think they did a couple coats of epoxy primer in the wash bay and now they're putting the finished epoxy on it. So it's really brightening it up in there.
And, uh, and the mechanics, I think, are pretty excited about having the overhead crane and, and, uh, just such a good, um, work area. We are hoping to have an open house on that. Have we, has anyone looked at that at all or coordinated?
Nothing yet. It's a little better.
Time frame?
Somewhat finished date on it. Uh, cabinets in the break room, the conference room are, we're in, so look.
Okay. Um, the other thing I want to, uh, compliment the county staff and, and coordinating with, uh, um, Judy has helped been out there looking at the, um, IT stuff and make sure we're all online there. And, um, Brent is coordinating how we should move forward with, with, um, custodial and, and maintenance, because it's, as Brent said, it's, it's more work to keep a new building up than an old building, because you have to stay in compliance to, to make sure we're in, to get all of our warranty work, you know, so. Anyway.
Just, just one note too, I'd like to, uh, extend the thank you to all our pow drivers and emergency people that might end up working in this storm, so-called storm coming in, that hopefully it doesn't hit us as bad, so.
Be a heavy one.
But it's, it's a lot of stress on those people behind those wheels of those bow trucks out there. You can't see it.
Yeah.
Don't know where you're going and always looking out for that stolen car.
Right. Any other, um, reports, correspondence? Okay, moving on to appointments. Anyone have any appointments? Nothing? We, okay. Um, Pat, we have a award for recognition.
Yep, I think the executive director of the pantry is here along with Sandy. You guys wanna come up? And, uh, there's a check.
I just want to explain this program to those in attendance and listening. Um, Becker County employees and commissioners and, and staff, um, donate, donate items. And we do an auction. And this is money raised by staff members and, and commissioners and all the other employees to buy and donate. And this is the amount of money we've raised this year to donate twenty-six hundred dollars to the Becker County, um, food pantry. So thank you to those that have donated and purchased items. Uh, John Serp put us over the top this year. Had a lot of bidding on that, so we'll get up in front and take a picture.
That's true, it's not. Well, I, I used to teach with, uh,
You hit the button, sir, someone's.
Robin Turnbull does that, yeah. And he, some of that maple syrup, so good.
For those that don't know, uh, the food pantry is building a new, new building, um, in partnership with the county and the city. And go ahead and explain where that is and, and what, where we're at in the process.
Uh, the new building is going up on the Richwood Road off on Terry Street, where the, the city bought the Cleveland Farm. And the city sold us a little bit over one acre of land to put up our building. As for the processes to where we are, we're looking to put shovels to the ground if we could find the ground.
Yeah.
Um, we've got to wait for the city to put in a sewer line. Um, there is no sewer running out. It's, the, the nearest sewer is two blocks away. And so the city wants to put in the sewer line before we go, um, and start. And there apparently is a apartment complex or something that they're looking at going in in the area as well, so they'll kill a couple of birds at one stone. Uh, two side notes. We are officially forty years old. Um, according to the state of Minnesota. We're forty-one according to Becker County, but forty according to the state. And for the new people on the board, just to give you an idea as to how we are doing, uh, for the month of March, we served three hundred ninety-one families, which is one hundred ten percent of what we served pre-COVID. But we only served one thousand one hundred eighty-eight people, which is ninety-nine percent of what we did pre-COVID. We're missing a few large families. So we're back in business. We've never got out of business. Any questions from any of you?
Well, I don't know if anyone has been over by the, you know, their, their building currently is by the fairgrounds. And during COVID, then they had, they had, uh, had lines and they had to, um, you gave people in line, you, you went out and serviced them. So you made do with what you had. And I know your facilities are very, um, cramped and, and difficult to maneuver. So hopefully sooner than later, you get into new ones. And, um, thank you for all, everything you do and all the volunteers that, that help.
Thank you. We're hoping for late September, early October right now. But we'll see once the snow quits coming in, in June.
Yeah, and the building that you're currently in, that's a city-owned building?
That's a city-owned building, which they want to demolish.
For parking for the fair. Now, we won't get into that.
Well, there's other things, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
But, okay, um, thanks for, thanks for everything you do. And again, thanks to the employees that have donated to, to the cause, so.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone have anything you want to add? Questions?
If anybody wants to come over and visit us, we're open.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And accepting donations. All right, Pat?
Uh, yeah, uh, so, um, Amanda's gonna actually bring up the, the, uh, revenue loss matrix. Um, I want, uh, I think the board's aware of this, but I want the public to where is, uh, we won't be using the term ARPA anymore. ARPA is, uh, no longer, um, um, something we'll, we'll use because we have moved, um, this money per board direction into, uh, a special general fund uh, as part of a revenue loss. So the, the, the board last year approved what's called a final resolution to allow us to move that money into revenue loss. It, it essentially just becomes public funds and we can use it per statute. So an example like the fair where we've provided a hundred thousand for the four-H building, we can do that because chapter thirty-eight of the Minnesota state statute says the county can provide funding to the fair. Uh, we can provide funding to the food pantry because the, uh, there's a statute that allows that. But it's very limited, um, in providing public funds to other outside agencies. So we're gonna have to be very careful as we've gotten a lot of external agency requests, which, what you see on the matrix, uh, up here is what's in green is essentially everything that the board has either approved or we've completed. Um, I'm not gonna go through that whole list because we've gone through it before. But as we go down the list though, there are a couple of items that went to finance that we'd like to, the board to consider. Um, the first item is the, uh, uh, an internship in the county attorney's office. And I know Brian was here, but Brayden is going to take Brian's place, uh, to answer some questions if you have any, but this was discussed at finance committee. It'll eventually get orange down there. Um, there it is, there, there's the first one. So, um, so we, we don't have an actual number request and I think what was discussed at finance was, um, certainly the, the county attorney's office that proposed this year about budgeting for a new position. And there was discussion on whether, uh, an internship long-term could, um, fulfill the role of a, of a, of another position. Um, we are still dialing the cost because it's surely up to the county attorney about those hours, but what's exciting is, um, as individuals get through their law school, they have, under the oversight of a licensed assistant county attorney can perform the functions of, uh, of that county attorney. And there's certainly value in, in doing internships because it ultimately creates opportunities for new employees. So after going through finance, um, it was agreed that the board would discuss it and get some direction. Um, I would say that there are, there are some attorney forfeiture funds that also might be eligible. And certainly, uh, we would, we would not always be looking at revenue loss funds for this. Uh, if the board were supportive of it, we would look at it just as an ongoing budgeting for an internship in subsequent years, so.
And I think that's what the discussion was, that this year with this would be a stopgap for next year's either budgeting for the intern or the position or a, uh, the request this year was full-time position. So at budget time next year, we'll look at either funding a new position or continuing this, one of the two. But this first year, I think, um,
Max.
Brayden was sixty-five?
Sixty-five hundred max for this year. It'll be about a ten-week program. So that's, he's up to sixty-five hundred, could be a less, so.
Anything to add, Brayden?
Potential law student, something they can have student certified so they can appear in court. The past, they've done a lot of traffic, little misdemeanors that, you know, in the summertime of the population, a lot more crime, I guess, traffic violations that will get swamped. But it's a good thing for an intern, you can handle those types of cases, take the load off of us. Um, I also could always lead to a possible future position once they become an attorney.
And the, and the one that, that we're considering is, is a, is someone that was in office last year as a.
Last year and now gradually this December, spelled to us, the local Becker County. Yeah, he's already, he already knows us. He likes working here and is in the future.
So come in pretty well ready to handle some of these, these lighter cases.
Ben's probably gonna stick around.
Hopefully. So would that entertain a motion to approve? Or Pat, is that?
Yeah, if, if the board is so inclined, yeah, to give that direction.
I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Dave to authorize the hiring of a summer intern, a paid summer t- intern with a, up to sixty-five hundred dollars. Is that accurate?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brayden. Tell Brian thank you.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll continue just on that matrix. There was a second item that was discussed at finance committee, um, and that is the opportunity of investing in, um, in the tram. Um, this was, uh, an item that's actually generating quite a bit of private sector funding as well. There's been a number of donations as the board is well aware. And the question would be, um, coming out of finance, uh, would the board entertain an investment in, in the tram and to what level?
Um, and I have to say, John has done a really a lot of legwork on this and, and found, uh, some local people to, to help out, um, with, with the fix on it. Um, John, you maybe wanna go, wanna explain more, but he's, he's done his homework on this and done a lot of work, so.
You know, it's, it's just trying to continue the old Pelican uh, transfer, river transportation system started back in the eighteen hundreds and stuff. It's tram that goes from Lake Sally, carries boats, pontoons into Perry Lake or vice versa. And it has really affected our values out there on the lake, increased them. We've got a lot of realtors that are behind supporting us. As of last night, in hand, we have raised another ten thousand dollars towards it, so. And there's more pledges out there, but until the evidence and that owner.
And I think that's, in my opinion, I think, um, as John said, it increases the value of those property owners. So they are contributing significantly to the, to the improvement. Um, so.
Just working on the tram last year during the weekend, I'd go over there and help if it was down and get it back running. There's a lot of people that come down and are just amazed at what that does. And they want to bring their grandkids back to see this and, uh, it's, it's quite a tourist attraction out there. And then when we enhance our, uh, Dunlucks Shelter and picknick building, just gonna improve that much better, so.
So through, through the finance committee, then what the dollar amount was, we thought was twenty thousand for the improvements?
Match up to twenty.
And there, the cost is, um, estimated at thirty-five?
I think it was thirty-five thousand, yes.
So, um, looking for direction on, on, and John, maybe explain the improvements and how it's going to be better and longer and more viable, and then the long-term improvements that can be made after that.
Upgrade right now of some repairs with the big pulleys that are out in the lake. Uh, new, moving from a five-eighth cable to a three-quarter inch galvanize cable to longevity on that. Updating a motor that the motor is on there is probably, I want to say over sixty years old to, uh, um, what they call a variable speed start motor, where it doesn't give you that big jerk to start with. It gradually starts out slow, picks up the normal speed, has a braking system, so if something happens, the boat or the tram doesn't roll automatically right back in the lake. So stop it right there. And this is just a step from moving forward, possibly down the road with, uh, fundraising. We can move into where if somebody pays for a pass, they can get a coat on their phone and operate the tram right, right from their, their boat without having a staff person on site. And that would increase it quite a bit, so.
So, um, looking for direction, is the board willing to authorize, um, the land use department to expend up to twenty thousand dollars, um, for those repairs and improvements? Is that's accurate, Steve? Twenty? That was the, with the rest, with, for matching funds, up to that for matching?
I'd make that motion, uh, twenty thousand dollar matching.
Okay, motion by John. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. And this would be, um, come out of revenue.
Revenue losses.
Loss.
And you can just call it the special general fund. That, that'll, that'll probably be the.
I might just be calling it reserves.
Yep, and that'd be fine as well. It's all public funds.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Say, Pat, before you go on, um, one thing we should probably go back to with the discussion of the ad hoc committee. We should probably put it on our agenda to, is it the wish of the board then to re, to eliminate the, what we had as a moratorium? We should probably put that on our.
For the few, okay, it's the moratorium that was passed in, uh, September?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, you could, the board could withdraw that.
Probably put that on. Is it the wish of the board to remove that at that time next? We should put on, we should at least acknowledge and re.
Should get it on their agenda.
Agenda, yeah.
To say that we're not.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we actually.
Well, I think we should acknowledge, remove it.
But yeah.
With what? So is that the wishes of the board?
Yeah.
It, we gotta, we should clear, clarify and tell the, and then that will be clear to the townships that, that they need to enact their own rules if they want to expand any.
Because if the county gets a request, we still, anything over five hundred, that thousand requires a congested use which comes before us and we can deal with it at that time.
But we should probably acknowledge that at a, on the agenda item.
Will do.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so those that, we will, we will put this on our agenda to, to then rescind any moratorium that was on it at our next meeting, if that's the wish, if that's the wish of the board. But that discussion will be then to, like, like Erica said, we're not sure of where we were legally, but at least we will eliminate that part of it if that's the wish of the board at a, at a meeting with it being on the agenda. Is that appropriate?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, and you guys are still here, I think you should hear the next steps, what that we're doing. But, okay, Pat, do you want to continue?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, just maybe a department head committee update. We reviewed a few items that I think would be important for the public and the board to hear. Uh, as you know, the class and compensation study the board approved. And so the, uh, HR director, um, reviewed that with all department heads and, and started moving forward with the.
See ya.
Moving forward with the job, no, no, it's fine. Uh, moving forward with the job description update. So we're really pushing that hard. We, our goal here is to, to get everything complete here before the end of the summer. And, uh, so we did a full kind of top-bottom review of what's expected of department heads. Uh, in addition to that, what was discussed is, we wanted to get feedback from the, uh, department heads about how we do the mail system, and we've made some, some changes. In the past, um, at the end of the day, the custodiums that gather the mail and bring it to the U.S. Postal Service. And, um, we, we did a, a little bit of benchmarking, um, and we had started this many months ago, but, but Kerry was able to bring it to a conclusion, the HR director is, is, with the exception of just a couple of departments that have some specific needs, um, the protocol now is, is when the U.S. Postal Service comes in at ten a.m. to deliver the mail, they will come and pick up the mail. And we like that chain of custody. We like the janitorial staff to be focused on the custodial work involved and not having to walk that far, you know, to the postal service. And, um, the, the, there were sort of sm- small limitations from certain departments, but we've addressed that. And we have been implementing that since earlier this week. And we just want to keep the board and the public advised about that. So we think that's a good, um, best practice system. I think.
Just the courthouse?
Uh.
Or is that all courthouse, human services, all?
This courthouse, this building, yeah, is what we focused on.
Highway, they had mail to go out late on the corner, they come in and bring in the mail, the post guy and picks it up.
Okay.
There, there, there's nobody running mail.
A final thing, we, we wanted to get feedback from the department heads on the work from home policy. As the board may be aware of, it was July of last year that the board approved a work from home policy, but there was a sunset clause in it, so you'll have to renew it by July fifth. And so we're tr- we're attempting to get feedback, uh, both positive, negative, and suggestions, uh, to the board. And so we've asked the department heads to gather that information. From our viewpoint, it's, it's worked, um, with the policy that's written, but there may be some other ideas, some other suggestions that at least the previous board last year didn't want to consider. So our hope is to bring a summary to you, uh, here within the next thirty days. So you'll have plenty of time to give direction on any updates you would like to make to the policy before the July fifth sunset date. I think, uh, and I, and it was, benefits committee was already discussed, so I think I'll just, uh, I'll end right there.
Okay, our next item is, um, the management agreement with Sunnyside Care Center. We were notified, um, Friday that Ekumen is, um, no longer going to, um, serve us as our management agreement. Um, we were, uh, we were, Dave and I had a meeting with Ekumen officials a while ago, so they notified us that. So we could be prepared for that. Um, so we are prepared and, and I gotta, I gotta stress the thank you to Ekumen for, for working with us and, and really working for us to transition smoothly. Um, it's a hundred and twenty-day out. Um, Pat and Ashley from, um, Sunnyside have been working on the RFP already. Ashley and I talked and we want to make a few tweaks to it and, and we'll get those and probably get those to Pat. So the request today has authorized us to put out the RFP and we'll come back. Um, there, in this RFP, there is a timeline. There are some tweaks yet to do in stuff, but give us that authority to move forward. Then another good news is Ashley, the administrator at Sunnyside, um, not only wants to say this is her, this is her forever job, and she really loves it out there. And Ekumen has authorized or allowed her to stay. Um, another great working relationship that we've had. And, um, so we can see this, this should be a very smooth transition. The employees are Becker County employees and will continue to be Becker County employees. Ashley was the only Ekumen employee. And we'll determine how, how her contract moves forward, either a county employee or a new, the new facility, uh, management agreement. So what we're looking for is just, um, authorization, auth- maybe authorize the, um.
To commission the son of a son.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Authorize the committee to, to tweak the agreement, to, to put out an RFP. Um, the timeline will come back. Um, the Sunnyside Board will review it. This board will review it again and finalize it at our June sixth meeting. So, I mean, we have the timeline already set for, it, it's in the RFP. So just authorizing us to, to do that and sign off on that and, and anything else?
Just that on page three of the RFP, the timeline is.
Yeah, the timeline is on page three.
But we want to have some flexibility so we can still.
Yeah.
I, I think that is pretty much set, but, I mean, in case something comes up, I, if you could just authorize us to, to go for an RFP for the contract services at RFP.
I'd make that motion.
Okay.
But I will second that motion.
Okay, we have the motion as second. Um, any other discussions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We're going to bypass number four because we're going to move that to later. And opioid settlement, Pat, or?
Yeah, well, the, I did get an update from, uh, Denise Warren. Uh, she did meet with the two commissioners that are on the Human Services Committee. Uh, the material that you reviewed is, is material that not only I've reviewed, but the county attorney has also reviewed. He has no suggestions. Um, we're, we're sort of one of the last few counties that have approved this. We've been getting a lot of emails. Commissioner Nelson has as well, just reminding us that the April eighteenth is the due date. And if the board authorizes signature, the, uh, the board chair can sign it today. Uh, they would prefer a digital signature, so Commissioner Nelson can come into my office and do that. Um, but we could also just sign it paper-wise and email to them, but they'd prefer a digital signature.
I do digital on lots of things, so.
Yeah.
Um, we were hesitant initially because we didn't know the dollar amount on it and the, some of the requirements are quite lengthy. So we asked, and they would be kind of performed by a Human Services Department. Found out the dollar amount was quite significant, so we wanted to move forward with that. And those requirements have been vetted at the meeting, so. Um, entertain a motion to authorize a chair to sign that agreement?
I'll make that motion.
So one question for that. Oh, we can discuss it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any questions?
So do, do we have to make a motion for each one of these? Because there's like six of them in here, or can we just, for you to sign?
You just need one motion.
Just one.
That'll suffice.
Include the, for the second round of opioids.
Okay, all right.
Okay, and that's appropriate for both?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And that amount was over two-year peri- or two-year period, one point five million?
Five million, yes.
So very significant. Um, but there are some requirements that have to be, we have to make improvements or strive for improvements in addiction and mental health, I think. Okay, next item, claims. Mary? Morning, Mary.
Morning.
We're pushed, pushed you way back for some reason.
Oh, that's fine. Um, the first thing I have is regular claims auditor warrants in over ninety days requesting a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by John?
Second.
Second by Richard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
The second request I have is to approve the claims for human services, public health, and transit.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Dave?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next, we have the license list. There was one change from what was in the packet. Number five under on sale was Sunday, so I did hand out copies of the licenses. Do you want to go through them by type?
Yes, we'll look for improvement by type of license.
Move to approve the three-two on-sale renewals.
A motion by John to approve the three-two offs- off-sale renewal, Osage, Bait, and Sunlight Bar. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. A three-two on-sale renewal.
I'll make a motion to renew the, the two-on-sale to.
Ella Maurice?
Ella Maurice.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Three-two on-off remo- renewal for Tamarack Resort. Is there a motion and second?
No motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Wine and strong beer on-sale renewal, Tamarack and Ella Maurice.
Move to approve.
Motion by John?
Second.
Second by Richard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On-sale with Sunday renewal, parallel forty-six, Osage, Bait, Sunlight Bar, and Corment Pub.
And TJ, and Jay Randy's.
And TJ's, or.
Yep, that was added.
Yeah, that's it, one on the paper. Move to approve.
Motion by John, I'll second. Second by Barry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Combination on-off sale with Sunday renewal for Toad Lake Store.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by.
Richard.
Richard, second. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And we have a gambling permit with a resolution for the boys and girls thrift store and more raffle on August fifth. Motion by John to approve one C.
Second.
Second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And the final item I have is to approve the February, uh, cash comparison, sales tax, and investment summary.
Uh, entertain a motion to accept.
Move to approve.
Accept.
Motion by John?
I'll second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Kerry.
Kerry?
Kerry, we said Kerry will just put a little, a short-hanging fruit in the, in the packet and came up with about fifty pages of policy. I was like, holy cow, Kerry, we had five minutes.
I might have fallen asleep twice reading it.
I'm trying to get things done. Um, as I, as we spoke, I thought, um, perhaps the most efficient way, uh, after speaking to the chair, would be to reference, I tried to color code things to, uh, reference what we've talked about in work session versus, and then, um, in green, put it in the, back in the policy as I understood how you wanted the money.
Yeah, as we move forward now, I hope that we can approve what we went over last week, approve those changes or last meeting. And maybe, maybe we'll get a handout and then go through it the ne- for the next one. And there's a, the couple of things in here, low-hanging fruit, we could approve today too, if we can get, if it does, if it goes quickly, but.
Okay, so would you like me to go through?
Let's start.
Page by page?
Yes, yes.
So I will start on page eleven, um, all the writing in green.
Are we, are we, we on page eleven of the?
Page eleven of the policy?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
Where, where, are we, are we gonna, are we going through the ones that we went through that have?
I was just going to ask for, yep.
Right, okay.
Yes, um, because there was some language changes in our work session, and I just wanted to make sure that I captured the, what the board was wanting in the, in the.
So is it starting where your, the human resources department shall be responsible for maintaining there?
I'm starting at three point one is where it was starting.
Three point one.
I don't know if we're going to be able to get to much. So, so we're skipping to the second part of the.
Oh, the second.
I mean, so we're on page, um, we're at one.
One oh eight?
One eighteen.
One twelve. Um, one thirteen is probably where we'll start looking at, because there's red on page one thirteen of the packet. One thirteen of our pack.
Oh, of your packet, okay, yeah.
It is page.
Page six.
Page six of your policy.
Okay. All right.
And the red part, yes, there we go.
Okay, so you can skip ahead because we haven't, um, anything in red, we haven't really come to anything.
Well, I think we've, I think for, at least now, we should at least address it. And we can add, I would like, my opinion is we should add that and just add the, the sheriff's department will keep their records for now. I mean, and let's get it done. If we want to change it later, we can always come back and change it. Which is a long process. At least we got it in policy, so it's allowable right now. Otherwise, we're out of, out of policy.
We're all about compliance. That's the reason we brought it to you. So the board is so inclined, you know, the, the, the board could direct that the files, uh, remain in the sheriff's office personnel files. Uh, but we'd also, um, right now there's language that says the files are in the human services, uh, office, so we're going to want to.
Are they in the?
The human services.
Are they in human services now?
Yes.
We won't move them until the policy dictates that.
So I think we should put humans, humans, shall be res- necess- just like that, and excluding human services and sheriff until, until we can.
I thought we had agreed that human services would come over here.
But they're not right now. And.
But if we.
During transition.
But if we agree that they can, can they then?
Well, they can, they can regardless.
Yeah.
I mean, we can.
Say what we doing. Have the, most of the sheriffs, there's probably some that retain over there. Who's going to be trained over there to?
Well, I don't think the training will take too much, but I think right now they're going to be there for a, a while in human service. I think we put it in, we're trying to get through this part of the policy. I think we can come back to that and we can, as those records come over here from human services, then we can state that. I mean, then we can correct that. And if we can coordinate with the sheriff, if, if, at some point, that will, that will go, maybe not in the near future, but, um.
Well, inclusion of the basic banking system, they, Commissioner, uh, Jeff was bringing up a good, a good point. This is almost kind of a chicken or the egg thing. We will, we, we're all about compliance. So right now, when the policy says the files are in the human services office, that's the one exception. All the files should be in human resources, skip for human services, per the existing policy. We will not move them until the board directs us to. Once you direct us, we will move them. As far as the, the sheriff one, I might suggest we have a discussion with Sheriff's Committee. And, uh, and, um, and then it could be discussed a little bit more length, uh, about that. But there are, there is a lot of logistics things as Commissioner Olson spoke about. If we, if we do keep files in a certain area, there should be training and things like that, and, uh, there are a lot of compliance issues. So I think we're comfortable with the board allowing for the human services files to be moved. We're ready to go, um, from a, from a space standpoint, you know, to move those files. But, um, we could also wait. I mean, I, I just want to make sure we're not going to do anything until the vote, till the policy gives us the ability to.
We bet, uh, you know, in the past, quite a bit of discussion on, with the sheriff, past Sheriff's Committee on those. And I think we need to come up with some consensus and try to move forward on it too, you know, uh.
So I, I think it would be appropriate for us to just include that the sheriff's department, personnel records, records will remain there. But I think human services should come over. Because if we're prepared to do it and we're not going to do it until the policy says we should do it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
That's just.
So, so just like we're, you can just delete that part right above the red and add it into the red.
Oh, okay, so. Okay, so just so I'm clear, is it, and I'll wait for a motion, but I'll wait.
Well, I think.
Language.
I think Eric and I are on the same page, if human services is ready to come over, then I think we need to, if we want to stay in compliance, I think we should state that sheriff's department at this time can retain their records, and and we can look for future, future, I mean, we don't have to, we don't want to word it, but I think we can look at.
With moving, sheriff's was moving forward to eventually get them over here, so if something in there that cut off, gives them, well, we're, we can have all their stuff ourselves forever.
Well, and it might work that way, I don't know, I mean, I think we can strive for that and eventually look at that, but we need to.
List that we're gonna be continuing working to get some of the, their records, or some that they, they want to retain. We've had that discussion quite a bit, so.
I, I, I mean, I, I, I wonder if it's that would be better just addressed in the sheriff's committee instead of in the policy. I don't know that we want in the policy that we'll be looking, I don't know what.
You can't, that's what I was getting, you don't want to put it in policy that you're gonna, I mean, you could put in there, the goal would be to have all centralized, you, you could put, our goal is to have centralized to all, but with the two, with the two humans, human resources and their sheriff is excluded, to have their own, with, with appropriate man, maybe we add that for now, with appropriate management. That would, that would have the training aspect.
Sure, and we just don't know what that cost is, I mean, you know, and we look at what the best practices for counties is for the vast majority of counties with, I just can't think of any exceptions, all the records are in the, in the HR.
The only, the only other thought I was thinking, because to be honest, that is more secure spot than this, in my opinion. To put all the records in the sheriff's spot, would you have access to them there?
To so-called outside world, but not the inside world.
Well.
That's where the issue comes, that anybody can go look at them, pull them.
That's. That's debatable. I mean, where, which one is, would be more secure, because I've been in here where no one's at the front desk, and that door is open, so you just have a pocket knife to slide that, I mean. Let's, we're getting in a little deep.
Yeah, I think, I think if we address it among the sheriff's committee, and continue to move forward with whatever it is that the sheriff committee agrees to.
So the consensus at this time is to exclude the sheriff's department?
To include in the policy, to exclude the sheriff's department with the under, understanding of the board, not in the policy, that we will move forward with.
That will come back.
Negotiating with the sheriff's committee.
Do you want to put a timetable on that at all, like sixty days, or?
I wouldn't.
I'm just putting, I'm putting that out there for the board to consider.
Because is that consensus, okay to get through this portion of it?
Yep.
Could you restate?
The restatement would be, you can keep that language, just add the sheriff, the sheriff's records may, may be maintained in the sheriff's office with availability to, to HR.
Okay, so I think if you would say personnel files other than human services, so take out human services, but put other than sheriff's department.
Yes.
So it's the board's wishes that we do transition the human service.
Yes.
Files, okay, so I'm just basically replacing sheriff's department with, okay, human services.
Yep.
The, but the, 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 the sentence above the red, department heads and the personnel director shall be responsible for maintaining all this, it says human services, we gotta take that out.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, agreed.
Okay. The next red item, equal opportunity employment, that we kind of went.
We did, you just asked to, it was confusing to the board when you read it, so I just rewrote it to indicate that we're an equal opportunity employer, so.
I read it, I was confused this time.
Okay, next red item. On page one nineteen. The department head will notify appropriate committee of their intent, so this is referring to us changing our philosophy on the board? That if it's a budgeted rehire position, that it would not have to come from board of reapproval, is that fair?
That's correct, yep, yes, I added in the committee.
Streaming the product.
Yep.
And I did update the, I'm sorry, I did update the department heads with regards to.
No, don't worry about any of, this is more of a work session, they're finalizing work sessions, so.
Okay.
Chime in anytime.
The only part on, on page eleven, the green part, there's a typo under next to resource.
Yes.
It's Huma.
Oh, okay, alright.
I was wondering why.
Which section are you on?
The bottom of page eleven.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I need to cut that one, type. Twelve with guidance from human HR?
Yep.
Okay.
That looks good.
Then we go down to page fourteen or one twenty-one? Want to have a redisess on the.
I think what we were trying to figure out there, correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie.
One twenty-one.
The five point one, is that what we're talking about?
Five, five point.
Department, departmental transfer? Is that where we were talking, we were trying to figure out if it, departmental transfer meant like, human services from adult services to mental health, is that what we were trying to figure out?
I, I think there were several questions in there, I can tell you.
And you saw that there was some value to it, I think?
Um, yes and no, I think operations wise, I think there's been some, some of that specifically in human services where a position becomes vacant within that particular unit, they've allowed some, if you will, movement within the positions. However, I can tell you, I did have a discussion with our, our labor attorney with regards to that, and that's a potential issue for fair hiring. Because you're not necessarily opening up those positions to even other internal candidates.
But is that, is that within, I think where the question was, was it transfer from depart, like, that, like that, or was it I'm thinking within child protection, like a assessment worker versus case management?
I think it's all of it.
I would, I would like to get.
I, I did get clarification from legal, and that's exactly what I was told. Because if you're transferring one person, one person into a, another complete position, you're not opening up the position, and when you.
But the positions, the position isn't, they're the same job description, like it would be a social worker to a social worker, right?
Well, they have different duties, the ones that I was just referencing that occurred.
Yeah, to change jobs, you'd have to have a different job description, or else you wouldn't be changing jobs.
But, but a social worker, job description is the same for all child protection workers, or it's the same for all adult services.
Like child welfare, specifically.
Child protection, yep, so there, it's, it's just the.
Your duty should be different within that? With the.
So I, I, I think that that would cause a lot of difficulty if we're, if we're saying that.
That wouldn't be a new job then, that would just be a change of duties.
Mm-hmm, again, I think if you're changing duties, but it can tell you, when you start switching actual people into positions, that becomes a problem. And I think the interpretation of that particular part of the policy was being used fairly broadly.
What's your definition of positions?
Position, the latest example was a position, a individual resigned, they had very specific duties within their position, and they did some shifting within, and they termed the unit under that particular supervisor. And then allowed people within that unit to switch job duties, the whole job duties, but they're also naming people into so-and-so's prior position.
If those job duties were in the original job description, description though?
They had different job duties within the position, but again, I think it's used very broadly. If you have a generic job descriptions that encompass a whole unit, I think that that's different, that's where the difference comes in. But as we're, oh.
This is Denise Moore, if I could just speak about that too.
Hi Denise.
For a second. So, social workers, it's, it's within social workers with, within, or RNs that are all of the same class in, in a particular unit, and then we do rotate duties as business needs arise. Even when there isn't a vacancy, when there is a vacancy, then we take that opportunity and have provided that opportunity, been provided that opportunity in the past with, has, was cleared with HR, that we could, wrote, we could rearrange duties, there still is a job vacancy in the end. Always, if there's a vacancy, we move around job duties within the current staff, and then there's still a vacancy.
I think if we would, if we would have to start having that go through a hiring process, and I'm thinking again, child protection, just because that's where my experience is, if we have a, an assessment worker that leaves, and we then have to, if we have somebody internally saying, doing child protection case management that now has to apply for that assessment worker, then we go through the whole re, hiring process for that assessment worker.
Right.
That, we're then gonna have the case manager move to the assessment worker, and then we're gonna have, to have the whole hiring process for the case management, when really we could just shift, because they all have the same job description.
So, if we want to put this something in policy, can we, because it sounds like there will be case by case discussion to see how this works, but could we just put in there, department transfer, transfers should be coordinated with HR to make sure they're appropriate, you know, just.
I think, I think, this is, this is what my question was when we were talking departments, are we talking departments or within a unit? You know, I, I one hundred percent agree that if we have an opening in adult services, and we want a, a social, have a social worker in another mental health that wants to go to adult services, we need to go through the hiring process, but if we have a change of duties, I don't know that that needs, I mean, honestly, I don't even know that that needs to go to human services, because as a human services, do you know who does assessments and case management, or are they just all social workers?
Well, I, I've learned who does which duties, yes, but again, I had this discussion with the labor attorney, and I'm just relaying the information.
Does the labor attorney understand that the job descriptions are the same for all social workers?
Yes. Because then, again, you're within, within the unit, then there's some issues then, if you're defining the unit and you're allowing certain people to switch, but then you have a whole department.
Can you, can you put out the hire for internal only?
You can.
So when, what's the difference of just transferring or internal only?
The timeline.
The timeline, you can't just do it right away.
I think we'll come back to, I'm, I'm.
Well, we want to put, we have to, we're, want to approve this section, so, do you want to approve transfers, transfers can be allowed with appropriate research, I don't, I mean, how do you want to word that, we want to, we don't want to exclude it, but we want to make sure that it, it doesn't come back at us.
Yeah, I, I think it's just probably a narrower scope, when you look more at the duties versus switching people in within positions.
I think we should allow internal transfers that are done by the supervisor and/or the department head. I, otherwise, I think, if they're in the same, if they're in the same job description.
Thanks Travis.
I, but I think that, I think we need to define departmental.
Yeah.
That, that I think is where it's confusing, to me, the department is human services. Where then you have units, and I, under hu, under human services. So I think that's maybe what we need to do is, is define what what is a departmental transfer, is that a transfer between units, or is it within the same unit? And then I think that in my opinion, if we're going to get that narrow, that we have to go through the hiring process, that it has to go if we're changing a social worker job to a, a social worker job within a unit, then we need to spend a lot more money to have very specific job descriptions, because that's, I mean, right now the job description for a social worker is the same, whether you're in child protection, adult services or mental health, the job description essentially is the same.
Carrie, is this, is it by statute that these would be, is there, is there a statute, the state statute that says, or is it just labor law?
Yeah, when I consulted with the labor attorney, again.
Labor law, that we're, so why don't we just put in there, transfers may allow, may be allowed if it falls within the, within labor law?
Sure.
I mean, and then we can see, then we can move forward and.
I agree.
I mean, it, we don't, we want to, we don't want to break, we don't want to put ourselves at risk, but we want to allow as much flexibility as possible, so.
I would agree, I would agree, if there's the flexibility to do it, I mean, I'm certainly for that, but I also don't want to overstep where we shouldn't be either with the hiring.
And I think on a case by case basis, we could do some research and find, find out how to move those, so.
Sure.
Well, and Commissioner Oakes, that was gonna be what I was gonna say, as the labor attorney provided a solution, kind of navigate this to allow for the department head to make those decisions. What, what could we put in language, because this is not in any kind of bargaining language, this is the personnel policy, so, whatever you write is what we can do, and it's not gonna conflict, and it will over, overrule anything else that's out there, so has she provided a solution on, on what we could do in this situation?
I can, it was he, but, um.
Excuse me, sorry.
Um, I can certainly go back and see what he would suggest, and, and what the board's wishes of how they would like that worded, but I was just using the specific example that I had before me at that time. But there may be different examples that haven't come up.
We can bring that back to you that.
And I, and I would, I would definitely have some consultation with Denise, just because Denise is very familiar with.
Yep.
With how that works, just to make sure that we are addressing the needs of human services.
Or, for now then, because we want to at least put this on the, as acting policy, do you want to change that at all, or do you want to pull it out, or do you want to leave it as is? Because what struck out there is in our current policy.
Correct.
Um, how about if.
If you add the word duties?
I mean, I think, I think if we're looking at departmental transfer, if we're defining departmental as from unit to unit, I mean, I, I would I think we just need to define what a departmental transfer is. Because how it reads to me is, it would allow unit to unit, is how it reads now. And I, I don't think that, I think unit to unit, we need to go through a hiring process, it's just.
Well, I think if you say within, within the same duties, would, wouldn't that bring it tighter?
Well, each unit has the same, each person in each unit could essentially do any of the duties.
I mean, if we're looking at just job description, job descriptions, like I said, for social workers are all the same. So, we could say, transfers which do not change.
Unit job duties.
Well, but you would be changing duties, I would say transfers which do not change an employee's unit. I don't know what the word is.
Well, I think Denise maybe had one that said if, if if within the same unit, there, if you trying to think, she, there would still be a job vacancy, so. If you, you can alter job duties with, maybe you don't say change, maybe you just alter the current person's duties on the new hire. Because if the same, if the person's in that unit, and they just changed duties within the, can the department head change their duties when they want to reorganize, when there's a new, when there's a job opening? So it's really not a transfer.
No, no, it's not a transfer.
So we.
Depends on how you define it.
Well, that's how we're, that's where we're getting to, if it's not a transfer.
If your duties are changed in the same group, it's not a transfer.
Well, again, I think if you're reassigning duties from one position into another.
It's not a different position, it's the same one.
If you move people from this position to this position, then you're switching positions.
That, that would be changing from mental health to child protection.
Or within the same unit, if you have different job descriptions within.
I think they're all the same job description in the same area, mental health has all the same job description. same job description.
Well, why don't, why doesn't your committee visit this one specifically and seeing if we can?
I think that's a good idea.
Right now, and until we hear otherwise, do you wanna pull it or leave it as is?
Maybe I'll just leave it as is and then.
It'll be left as is.
I could have some further conversations and I know Denise had wanted some as well.
On five one.
And that's why I put rediscuss, because.
Maybe that's the answer then, each section of human services, mental health, child protection, whatever, they, in that section, they all, social workers, they all have the same job description. And they can do any of the duties.
Is, is, does that include anything over here though? You know, like in Mary's department, for instance, do you have any change of duties that you would, like when you have somebody leave your department, if you have somebody within your unit that wants to do that job, do they have to go through the hiring process? Are their job descriptions different?
But that's, that's, that's a big jump there, part time, full time. We're gonna leave it as is, so we can get off this bump and have your committee see if you can come up with a word, with the.
Yes.
Some legal.
And that's really what I'm looking for, there ha, it hasn't been consistent, so.
Well, let's discuss it with Denise.
Okay, five three.
Okay.
You just.
Where are we, five three?
Five three.
Yep. I don't have anything to add, okay?
So you're good with the, the new red line?
The only, and I hate to say this, but the only concern I have is if a person is demoted because they took a promotion and they don't, they didn't, they didn't, it didn't work out or whatever, so they got, went back to their old position, if, if somebody that's being hired, maybe interviewing for that position because the position's not filled yet, is deemed more qualified, is it fair to then get rid of that person that got demoted? That's what this says to me, I don't think that's right.
Okay.
Because it's not their, it's not, it's not really, they got the promotion, now they're not going to do the promotion because they weren't good at it, or they didn't wanna do it, or whatever, or didn't work out, they should be allowed, if it, their position is available, to go back to it, not, not lose it because somebody that we like is, is inter, interviewed and, you know, or, or looks good on paper, you know what I mean?
Yes, I would agree, um if the position is open, but how it was worded before is if you've hired and filled that position, they can always bump backwards.
Yeah, but I would say, we have to say that if the position's available, um.
There is a position available?
Yes.
Okay, you want to.
Does that make sense to you guys? I know it's a nitpicky thing, but I just don't want someone to.
So maybe you want the most qualified taken out of there, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just don't think it's fair that someone's been here for twenty years, they got, and all of a sudden they get a promotion and then they don't, don't do it well, or don't want, or they don't, they don't.
For whatever reason.
Whatever reason, they shouldn't be terminated because they, a twenty year employee shouldn't be terminated.
Okay.
Because they're.
So you just want it, probably less language saying that, that position's available, that they have the ability to.
Yeah, go back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll try to say last note.
Okay.
We can get done.
Is there anything else to discuss, um looking at?
Yeah, a lot of it we previously.
Sixteen overtime pay, or are we down to that yet?
Mm-hmm.
Or, or on the term, on six four, where we crossed out, county board of commissioners shall be notified of the termination. What do you guys think, what do you think of, that was the board think of that, should we not be notified, or should we be notified?
Um.
I don't know if we have to have a special, like, meeting, but we could be notified by email.
I think, I think it would be good for us to be notified when there's a termination or any.
This is a probation, this is a probationary though.
Probationary.
This is probation.
Oh, I didn't even.
I think we talked about.
No, I didn't.
Yeah.
Talked about that in our working session.
I'm sorry, I brought.
Yeah, I, if I, if I got rid of it, we.
I'm sorry, I.
Nope.
I, I didn't read the whole thing.
Well, each time you read this, you can read it differently.
Yeah. Never mind.
I think I brought up the same issue when, in our working session and then.
Nothing on fifteen?
No.
No.
I'm down to seven three on sixteen, is any, or anyone out with something before that?
No.
I, if I may, just comment on the seven point three, um I just read, redlined that just to make the board aware of how we are paying overtime currently to employees, that we are counting all time, not necessarily time worked, but if you're taking vacation or if you have a sick day or holiday within that week, it is counted in your overtime. There is at least one contract that I was able to find that this is, this wording is in there, um but we can discuss that or we can, that's a bit, probably a much bigger topic.
This is a bigger topic than we think?
Yes.
So what is your recommendation, or what do you, you wanna?
We have it in one contract and I know the county has, if we have it in one of the bargaining contracts, it's been expanded.
So the current, the wordage in red is in our contract?
It's in policy too.
No, but is the, the overtime based on actual hours worked, is that in our, in our contract? Is, you said that was in one of our contracts?
In one of our contracts, it's, it's uh how, how um overtime is calculated, is if you have a vacation day within the week, that's counted towards your forty hours. So you work thirty-two hours, one day of vacation, then you're eligible for overtime.
Conflicts with the red.
Yes.
Currently. Okay, so until we get that taken out of that contract?
Which I don't know that that's gonna happen, but again, it was more for just informational purposes, so if you wanna move on.
So we.
How the red, how the red is worded though, is how you just said, like, it says paid leave will be considered hour, hours worked for purposes of performing overtime calculations. And that's what is in our policy and you're saying that's what's in.
One of the contracts.
One of the contracts, so I'm not sure what you mean needs to change.
Okay, maybe I'm not, I'm probably not explaining this very well. Um, so basically, there's um some conflictual language, right now, how we are calculating overtime is if anything within the work week, sick leave, vacation time, it's all calculated as though you worked, and you're eligible for overtime.
Mm-hmm.
So we're paying out a lot of money for people that are on vacation or sick leave, et cetera. So again, it, I, I believe it started with one of the bargaining contracts that was put in there and then it moved over into our personnel policy, so we are paying currently on that basis.
So what, so what you're saying is not necessarily that we have conflicting, our personnel policy isn't necessarily conflicting the bargaining unit, it's just, do we wanna, is this how we want it in our personnel policy?
Thank you, yes.
For those that.
You worded it much better than I did, thank you.
For those that aren't, it's not in those um contracts. So we have the one union contract that has it worded, but do we want it worded this way for all employees?
And we, I, I don't know how far it goes back, it's probably been this way for a very long time, and I wasn't even sure if the board was aware of how we were calculating that.
And it, and would you say, speaking of other businesses or whatever, that's not typically how overtime.
That's correct.
Would be calculated.
That's correct.
Then I believe we've got another contract out there, it's over the daily hours worked.
Yes.
That's all.
Yes.
Yep.
So it doesn't go by the week, it goes by.
By the day. By the day.
Scheduled.
Mm-hmm.
It's a ten hour day, it's anything over there, it's eight, it's great, so.
Well, you're making it as clear as mud.
Sorry.
We got, got it.
Three different, there'd be three different.
Yes.
Well, I think, I think what we need to look at is, we can't, we're not gonna be able to change the union contracts, but we could change our personnel policy if we wanted to change it, for those that.
What are we, what are, so we're currently not doing this on the rest of?
We are.
No, the, this language?
Um, we're currently calculating as the sick leave and everything into the overtime as well.
So, so.
Following the bargaining contract.
So for an example, if somebody takes thirty-two hours of vacation, but then works sixteen hours, that's eight hours of overtime, even though they're only working, working sixteen hours that week.
Correct, or if you take three days of vacation, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, come in and work Thursday, something happens on Friday, you're on overtime, if you're a non-exempt employee, then you get overtime, even though you weren't here working the first three days. That can tell you this isn't, wouldn't be a very popular decision amongst employees, I'm sure, so.
The red is current language.
Yes.
So if we want, you're just bringing it to our attention that it's costing us, this current language is expensive, well, I don't have, I don't know if I have the appetite to take this out at this time. I, I think recognizing it.
Yep, and I, yeah, and I assume that that would be the board's, I mean, I just want you to be aware of how we're calculating.
I think the key to us is try to minimize overtime, I mean, and we, we've always done that, so.
And flex time and such, yes.
Yeah, that's all.
Yep, that's the way it is, yep.
Okay. You want ten, the performance review? I added on or near the anniversary.
Yep.
On ten. On twelve point two, I took out regular, um put in the green that we talked about.
Yep.
I changed the title, authorizing a scheduling.
The only thing I, I wasn't sure about is the pending appropriate performance of the.
Yeah, that was mine too.
Where, I'm sorry, where are you?
Back to twelve point two where it says, is that, and is that the discretion of the department head pending appropriate performance of the employee?
When, when I read that, when I say at the discretion of the department head, you don't need the word pending appropriate, because that's the discretion of the department head.
Okay.
So it's.
You want me to end that out?
Pending appropriate performance of the employee.
And appropriate staffing of the department, all of that's the discretion of, I would say, of the department head.
So you just want me to end it?
End it right at.
Is that the discretion of the department head, period?
Yeah, I was really just trying to give the authorization to the department.
I think that is by saying it's at the discretion.
Okay.
Then, this isn't in green, but I'm sorry, the, what confused me a little bit is, it's in the same heading where it says, when an employee under specific employment problems has vacation hours exceeding, what do we mean by specific employment problems?
That's in the old policy, I didn't.
Yeah, yeah.
Your interpretation, you know.
Could be uh, we're scheduling on, happen, some in the sheriff's office, some in, especially highway where that winter's your vacation.
Yeah. But I don't know that we would call that a specific employment problem, right?
Yeah, it doesn't really fit.
We can't get them time off.
No, you can't, so you.
Because of the workload.
Yes, yes, they should be, they should qualify to be able to carry more than twenty-two four.
So.
I don't like the underspecific employment.
Under qualified employment? Issues or?
Maybe you don't need any of the specific employment problems, I think it's probably referencing, you know, some of those departments where it's difficult to regulate that overtime, such as our plo drivers and some of those kinds of things.
You could strike that.
I think you could probably strike it, the meaning would probably still be.
And then vacation hours, the department head can petition for them to have.
Yeah, has vacation hours exceeding, okay.
Yep, that makes sense.
All right.
Can I say something real quick, um, under holidays, um, uh, jumkins should be in there.
It.
It is.
It is, it's uh, at the bottom, it's at the top of the next page.
Yeah, it is added.
Hit it, there it is, okay, I'm sorry.
All right, the twelve point three three, we had already taken out that language or the board had already agreed to that, so that's just reflective in there.
The personal leave day, again, I'm sorry, this is one that we didn't touch on, but I thought part-time employees got one.
It doesn't state either.
Doesn't state either.
Doesn't state that, you're saying?
Yeah, it says each employee shall be entitled to two days per year of personal leave.
To be honest, I don't know.
That was, that was always my understanding.
So you want me to research to see?
So, so check that each full-time employee receives two?
Yeah, and then I would note.
Part-time would.
That part-time gets one, but maybe that's just, that could be contract, that could be a bargaining unit contract.
Just where that language is.
What's the personal day, comes out of your sick leave or vacation or?
It's a separate day. It's just a personal day.
It's a separate day.
Mm-hmm.
And if you don't use it, you lose it.
Yep.
How many departments get that?
Everybody.
Everybody, okay.
Not commissioners.
You don't, you don't get one, unless you sell more syrup.
So may, so I, so I could be wrong that the.
I made a note of it to see where it comes from.
We'll leave it as is, but check to see if you wanna clarify that.
Yes, I sure will. Okay, so now we are in um to where we would, unless you wanna keep going.
We do not.
No.
I, I assumed you didn't.
So, starting on thirteen, sick leave, um we will tackle this at our next meeting, if we wanna take this and make notes.
Yep.
Yep.
Or are we doing work session at the end of today or no?
No.
Or scheduled?
No.
Wishes of the board, no work session at the end of the day, we're gonna go and look at.
There, you get, there, it's there if you want it.
We're just gonna go into a work session.
I really wanted the work session.
Homework for next meeting.
Yes.
Could I, um, before we, before I give up my time to the next, um, in your packet there was the per diem that I would like um the board to, if you so choose.
What page, what pages are?
It was a separate attachment.
Back up above the ones.
The meal reimbursement.
Oh.
That's a, as you would call it, a low hanging fruit or.
Well, is that for breakfast or lunch? The fruit.
The fruit.
What page, what page?
Bowl.
One of those.
One of five. I looked at that, I, why aren't they all the same?
I kinda like the, the, the Clay County's, they travel a lot of.
I'm gonna go to Clay County, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I just, I did some benchmarking, um, I, I should have maybe pulled the otter tail, but I didn't, um.
We have nineteen dollars, you're gonna go and have something to eat in the evening or, you go to McDonald's to.
Even twenty-three dollars in the metro area.
You can't get a water though.
Are we with this policy? It says no alcohol.
No.
Yep.
And, but it, it's and gratuity. The, are we, are we requiring receipts on this then?
Yep.
With this?
Well, I, I've got a message in to Nicole, she's not in, and that's what I discussed.
But let's, let's move forward with receipt, this is allowable with receipt.
Yeah, that's fine.
We just up the.
With, with the Clay County schedule, is that what you're saying?
Clay County, what Clay County is currently doing, or the fifteen, twenty, thirty, but with receipt?
Yep, yeah.
And take out the met, like, across the board, whether.
Yeah.
So just whether metro or not metro.
Yeah, just, everything's gone, yeah.
Yeah, no, there's no difference.
So if I, if I may, for a point of clarity, um when I talked about per diems with this, one of the issues that was brought, like, for instance, if you are one that doesn't eat breakfast and you have a larger receipt for dinner, as we call it. Is that allowable, is that the board's wishes?
I don't think we can go down that road.
Okay.
I mean, I just don't.
You just want by meal, is how you want this stated, is that correct?
I mean, I would allow a brunch to be lunch then, I mean, you know, I, I don't think we can combine, start trying to combine.
Okay, so you just want me to change the schedule, is that what the board is the consensus? Okay.
Yeah. Breakfast fifteen, lunch twenty.
Yeah, and you can. If you do a late breakfast, you can put it in.
You could, you could, you could starve yourself, you could starve yourself all day and go eat that.
Okay, very good.
I, I, I understand it, but I just, it would be nightmare trying to.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it would be a nightmare.
Let's get breakfast, wanted something different, so. All right, thank you.
Let's make a motion to approve those changes at this time. Is that appropriate?
I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Dave, and that includes the per diem change?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And that was pages up to.
Twenty-one.
Well, we're getting a small chunk at a time.
Yes.
I tell you, it's, you know, it's, it's not only good discussion, it's good learning for us too about the policy. It really helps us understand what we're.
Yes.
We should do this every day.
Uh, no.
Every day, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, well, hopefully we'll wrap the rest of this up very fast. Uh, Judy has a couple, um, renewals, and in our new policy now that we just, Judy, you don't have to bring this. Are we, that's something though that we should clarify, are these new hires going to be effective immediately? Pat, what do you think?
Yes, sir.
The, the new hires that come, the renewal, or the rehire of a current position that resigned, or you know, that just, are those positions now not required to come to us? To redo, because we just approved this new policy.
Correct, yes, that's, that's exactly it.
So, as of today. If you have, if it's in your budget and it's a resignation, it can go right to committee and not come through the board. Please let us know, but.
Yeah.
Well, and, and there will still be discussion, and we want departments to think when there's a vacancy.
Outside the box.
Is this, is this what you want, do you want to change the job description, obviously any changes have to go to the board. But if it's been budgeted for, and they're just still in that position, then yes, they can move forward in consultation for sure.
And the next time, well, as we move forward, these renewals won't have to come before the board, it just committee discussion to them. So, but we're here today, and we have two simple renewals.
Okay, the first one is the software use for Arc G I, G I S, company name is E S R I. And, uh, this is twelve thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars, and that is the, I believe, the same price as last year.
Yep.
Who'd approve?
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Erica, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the second one is, um. It's being billed by High Point Networks, that's who we bought this through, and it's Veeam, it's what we use for, uh, packing up all of our, uh, software. With the exception of, uh, Office, with the exception of Outlook. This is three thousand nine hundred and eighty-four, it's about a three hundred dollar increase from the last time.
Wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you Judy.
Thank you.
Judy, we also thank you for, um, coordinating at the new Public Works Building, we mentioned that earlier, and, and know that you're, um, it. It, it's more than just a, it'll work out, it's, it's, you gotta do the homework and do, but so thank you for coordinating.
No problem.
And Jim too. Okay, land use?
Chair, word members.
Morning.
Morning.
Number of items before us today to talk about. First one is to award the two thousand twenty-three tree planting bid. Mitch worked cooperatively with other, uh, counties to do a region-wide bid. And this is the one that they will, they, they considered, recommended getting into a contract with was New Equal LLC for ninety-five thousand, ninety-five dollars per thousand.
I'm just gonna give this opportunity at the board, if anyone wants to do this job for that ninety-five dollars per thousand trees planted.
I looked at that bid and said, holy cow.
If not, entertain a motion, motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Dave, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The second item is approving the spring timber auction. Supposed to be take, it's gonna take place on Friday, May fifth, at ten AM in the Commissioner's Boardroom. And in the packet, there's eleven tracts that are gonna be sold.
Yep. Okay, authorize the public sale.
Make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Erica. Second by John, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Third item is North Country Trails funding request. They, last year, we gave them four thousand dollars to purchase equipment and some operating, this year they up their request to five thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars. Again, to purchase some equipment and to help pay for some of the operating expenses like fuel, uh, that type of thing.
We did request the receipts need to be turned in prior to payment though. I know, I think they wanted the payments upfront, but.
They want a whole check upfront.
I don't know that, that Mary stated that our auditors require receipts for those purchases.
That makes sense.
Move one D worth receipts.
Okay, motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Dave, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is, uh, Dunton Locks Shelter, we're looking for hire some professional services to help us get through the design and bidding out the project, and providing some construction oversight of the new shelter, I do have some prints if you're interested in seeing what the shelter would look like.
You've got, um, five people up here, you'd have five opinions that. I think you leave it up to the committee, and if they can come to two people consensus, it's. Who's on the building? Can use it.
We hashed it over and we kind of came with this final design that. Got to draw the line someplace and.
Yeah.
I, I don't like, there's a few things that I don't like about it, but overall it's a pretty good building design.
I guess if, if we, the board's good with this, we'd like to get into a contract, we did do some research. Uh, we got a proposal from Woodseth to do complete design build, uh, oversight, that was forty-one thousand, we had one with MBA, they did their original estimate for our granting request. And to, for them to finish this, it would cost us twenty-four thousand. And so, in committee, we had talked about trying to find a less expensive option, so I packaged together one with Dovetail Development, that's an architect out of Fargo, they work with Sandman Engineering, which is a structural people, and then also TJ, he's a, um, Toby Edman?
Ider.
Ider. He's a draftsman, does drafting for the tech or college, I should say. Between the three of them, they worked together on, on a number of projects, and they're, the estimate for, to use them would be fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. If you're good with going with that solution, I would then reach out to the architect, we would start reviewing this with her to make sure that there's no code problems, and then also be forwarded to Sandman, and they would review the structural to make sure that it's built the way it should be. Electrical and the plumbing is not included in here, but I've talked, talked to the architect about that, normally that's included as part of a design build. So, when they, you, you just turn it up, turn this over to the general, and they're bidding on this, and then they gotta build it according to code, and they would have it reviewed by the state.
I think, um, I wouldn't really be real confident, but these three entities have worked together, and they, they seem to, and from what Steve has said, that they're comfortable working together. And it would be a cost savings to us, so.
Yep.
I'm fine with it if he's, if, if there's comfort there, I, without knowing them, I, I'd be skeptical, but if they're.
Yeah, no, that, the other way is so expensive.
Yeah. With the cost savings, as long as this group's been working, it has good communication, work relation.
You know, if you look at this small, little building project, we spend more time on this than, uh, GL or Public Works.
I don't know, do you remember how many meetings we've had on the Public Works building? Twenty years worth. Anyway, with this design though, I, I, with the, kind of the detailed one, as you design it, I'm very aesthetically, I don't know what it would look like, but it looks like rock or stamped rock, it, I would be.
It's not stamped rock, it's actually, uh, lam, I want to say laminated rock, but it's like actual rock cut and inch slabs.
But I would, I would look at that, it looks too big of a wall for just that, to me, especially when it gets, you know, on that, all the way up to the peak. Aesthetically, I think it will, it would look better if it was split somewhere in there and do a rock base and then a wood top, but. I'm, that's my suggestion, I won't say it again, but do it right. No, it just aesthetically, I don't know that rock, that whole thing would.
I thought he brought something up about that too, he could do some color scheme, or whatever, to break that up a little.
Yeah, especially when it goes all the way to the peak. That's. I don't, that, that design below on the left, second one, that's where it really, that's where she really looks, and inside, I would like a be, you know, but anyway. I'm fine, you need to.
Even if it was just to the.
That line, the. Raptor line.
Not, yeah. For the trust.
And a break above, so.
So, wishes of the board on the contracting with. What's the term?
Dovetail, Sandman, and, uh, TJ drafting.
We have to move somewhere, so.
Yep.
The recommended.
Motion to go with.
Motion by John.
Those three.
I'll second.
Um, Erica, second, to go with.
The three.
The three.
Woodseth, MBA, and, uh, local, for the total of, subtotal of fifteen, three fifty, with some additional electrical engineering maybe, possibly, whatever, that would be minimal. I don't know.
That would be billed into the general contractor's bid.
Okay.
So he can be responsible for it.
Hey, any other discussion? With that, I see four thousand estimate, so you, do we want to allow a little bit of fluctuation if, if that, or? And, let's go up to sixteen thousand? Is that a?
Yeah.
Well, just authorize up to sixteen thousand, that'll give you a little.
Sure.
If that's all right with the motion maker.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is we went out for concrete crushing quotes, we had two bids, uh, Central Specialties, Mark Sand and Gravel, they're both large companies that do this, and Central Specialties was low quote at twelve dollars and thirty-nine cents per cubic yard, and with a mobilization fee of twelve thousand dollars. If we crush ten thousand yards, it, it's estimated project cost would be a hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred. And they, they can get this done by the June one request.
Move to approve, uh, Central Specialties at twelve thirty-nine a cubic yard.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by John, second by Richard, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Are we gonna, are you selling any of that, as it, when it's done?
Oh yeah, we'll sell some.
To, to whom, to Jim or to?
Oh yeah, well, in fact, as we're talking to Jim already, we still have some out there, we're gonna try to clean that out and probably hollow.
And townships eligible?
Pardon?
Townships?
Oh yeah, it's, it's open to anybody.
Okay.
One spot, Barry, we talked about on the new highway building is that flat parking area about where the construction trailer, and that's up to grade, it's putting that crushed concrete on that and get it compacted out.
Yeah.
For some type of surface.
Historically, what we did is, we sold it to the highway department at cost, you know, with what our costs have been, one of the pass through, we might up it a little bit if it's to the general public, but.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Mitch? Jim? Jim's first is a bid award for bituminous materials.
Yes, good morning, um, first item, our bituminous material, this is the oil that we use in our seal coat. Uh, we received one, uh, bid on that, this has been typical for the last several years, as Flint Hills is the only refinery in our state. Bids came in at eight, five hundred eighty-four dollars a ton, this is up about twelve percent from twenty twenty-two bids. So, just so you know. Who'd approve?
Motion by John to approve one A.
Second.
Second by Richard, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next item for consideration, bid award for dust control. Uh, we received, um, three bids on this, and, uh, the local contractor, Corbin Excavating, uh, was the low bidder at four hundred, or two hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. This compares to last year's, it's up about five point seven percent from last year's prices.
One B.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard, any other discussion?
There's the same one that had it last year, Corbin.
Corbin, yeah, no.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
A final item for your consideration, um, we have, uh, kind of finalized our, our furniture purchase, uh, I know you had seen previous kind of estimates um, in our request for funds on this. This kind of narrows everything down, we have, uh, our local contractor, Cooper's, uh, supplying this, um, equipments to us, and, uh, the bid comes in at a hundred and one thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents, we're recommending approval.
Move to approve their furniture request for hundred one eight forty-three seventy-nine.
Okay, motion by John. Second by Richard, and this comes out of special general funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
So now, all that's left on our agenda is a closed session to discuss. I'll read the closed session thing, and we'll have a short break and then interim.
Yes. Could, could, could I recommend something, Commissioner, maybe take a break first and then go into closed session?
Okay.
Because that way, you're not wandering around, closed session, so.
Okay, we'll have a break and come back and go into closed session. Okay, we'll have a break and come back and go into closed session.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome back online, we are now gonna go into closed session, motion to close, entertain a motion to close the meeting pursuant to statute thirteen D oh three subdivision one B, public employer may majority vote of the public meeting decide to call the closed meeting, discuss labor negotiations, including negotiations, strategies or developments, or discussion of the labor, a review of labor proposals, conduct pursuant to stat sections one seventy-nine A oh one, one seventy-nine two five. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by John.
I'll.
Second by Erica, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Join and close.